Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Pine Island 2022 candidate forum. My name is Mitch Massman, a community and business development specialist for Community and Economic Development Associates, and I will be the moderator this evening. This evening's forum is going to consist of two segments, one for city council and one for mayor. We will ask a series of predetermined questions to the candidates. Each candidate will be given two minutes to answer, after which we will open the forum to any other questions. If you have a question that you would like answered during the open question portion, there are pens and paper in the back of the room. Please take a moment to write your question and bring it to the city staff at the back of the room. We will now draw a line to determine the order in which candidates will answer questions. The first question will go to Kelly, followed by Jason, and then Brandy. The first question is for Kelly Lible. We will now begin with a two-minute introduction. So candidates, please introduce yourselves. Start with Kelly.
Yes, hello everyone. My name is Kelly Lible. I graduated here from Pine Island High School in 2014. My family has gone back in the community or living area for four generations now. Fun fact, I used to go to city council meetings in high school, partially for fun, partially because I got extra credit in my government classes. Previously on Rod Spiel, the Arabs found this contingency. Make sure to point me out in the council audience. I've been heavily involved in the community since my days in high school. I was the executive director of the Pine Island Area Chamber of Commerce from 2016 to 2021, in that time establishing relationships with dozens of businesses and organizations in the community. I've also served on the Pine Island Cheese Festival Committee, Pine Island Image Committee, Pine Island People's Food Arts, Toastmasters, and a few other organizations. I'm also a five-year brain cancer survivor, and that puts me in a challenging situation to find balance between my work life and my personal life and in general, making sure that I'm not stretching myself too thin. Because I have generations of family in the community and because the community has bolstered me up and supported me in such fantastic ways, I view it as my service and my duty to give back. I was first elected to city council when I ran in 2018, and it's been a pleasure serving these past four years, dealing specifically into city issues and connecting with residents to see what's on their hearts and what will you work towards together.
Thank you, Kelly. Jason Johnson, with Mike.
Hi, my name is Jason Johnson. I've lived in Pine Island for about 21 years. I live with my wife. I put two kids through the Pine Island School system. They're all on their own now. I am an incumbent. I was first elected in 2014. I've been on numerous committees, serving city through that. I also, I'm a third-year veteran of course, about 24 years with the sheriff's office here. But I don't know, my wife is a nurse at the end of all. She's been there one, five, twenty-six years. We came to Pine Island. We picked Pine Island because of the schools. There is great talent. When you grow around, you hear a lot of positive stuff about the schools. So we moved here. Also, you know, it was close to me there, which is the reason a lot of people, people moved here. So that's a little bit about myself. I've been on the personnel committee, finance committee, city shop liaison, fire department liaison, EDA. I should have asked for mayor, state leader, if I were able to come. EDA. I've been on a lot of public committees, public works, all that stuff. So that's a little bit about me. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Brandy Baisalo. I will go with, I am a wife of four girls, so I'm coming through the Pine Island School. I work in information technology where more money things. I help with process improvement and teaching process improvement. I also have a business sticker to you and business management. I've lived in Pine Island for about six years. We also chose Pine Island for our family, for my children. We started out in Rochester. I graduated from John Marshall in 2006. I, since I moved to Pine Island, have been very active in the community. I am part of the Pine Island Park Board, where I help run the farmers market. I also am the vice president on the Cheese Festival Committee, where I help chair craft and vendor market, festival bookings and fundraising. And I'm also starting a new community foundation that is just getting off the grounds. It's the Pine Island and Surrounding Area Community Foundation, looking to collect farm debris and air fish into Pine Islands and giving people away. Among that, I originally grew up in a salt town community. I was also very involved there with their committee for River City Days. Other than that, I really enjoy working with our local businesses and creating lots of fun.
I will begin with our first question, and this question, we will start with Jason. The first question is, why are you running for city council?
I'm running for city council because I'm not a community member. I want to get active with the community. I have secured us so well. We have a lot of challenges coming up. We have the District Santerio project that's coming up, North Main. We've got to finish the streets. And we were working on them when I first got elected in 2014. We're almost, we're almost at the finish line. We've got to do that. We've got a lot of development coming, North Main. We were working with Prairie Island Indian Community. We have a great relationship with them. I'd like to continue that. I have the knowledge and experience on the board to help transition under that. I've worked under two great mayors. I've learned under Rod, both Sandy and David, two great mayors. And I'm willing to step out for four more years to ride some leadership.
Thank you, Jason, and Brandy, same question.
I believe that running for city council is the next step in my process of looking for to take a more active role in my community. As I explained in my bio, that I am very involved in the community. And I think that when you live in this, when you're in a situation and when you're doing something in a place, I believe that you should put more into it than you take out of it. In order to last three or four years, I've definitely been involved in plenty of projects that have confirmed my determination to run for city council. I've met some amazing people and formed amazing relationships in town. And I definitely have a passion, which is for the city, which is what I think that we need on our council. So that is why I'm running for council.
Thank you, Brandy, and Kelly.
Yes, thank you. One of our state senate candidates this year was also the previous mayor of Surota. That's very awkward. If you're running for any other reason than to serve, you're doing it for the wrong reasons. As our other candidates have mentioned, we feel that the community has contributed so much to us, so it's only just that we give back to the community that has supported us. I first ran for city council in 2018 because at the time, the council was looking to potentially develop an ICE detention center. I organized with my friends and neighbors, helped council rescind the resolution in support of a detention center. I know that we are a welcoming, friendly community, and a detention center doesn't necessarily reflect those values. As we transition out of the pandemic area, it's crucial to be accessible and transparent and connect with our citizens. We serve on city council by connecting with our friends and neighbors and listening to our constituents on what they need and how we can better serve them. As I mentioned, the first term that I've served on council has been an incredible brand of experience. On the topics we've discussed, as Jason mentioned, there's a lot of big budget projects coming up in the next 10 or 20 years that we, as city council members, need to provide the city with that visionary direction of what shape we want to take. But ultimately, my soft interest in this venture is creating an open, welcoming front of the community that I am honored to be a member of.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm moving on to our next question. This question will go to Brandy, then Kelly, then Jason. City council is a four-year commitment. As a member of the city council, what projects do you think should take priority in the next four years?
Kind of a loaded question, but with the record going population, I believe there are several projects that should be priority in the next four years. Some are already in progress and will continue to be in progress for the years to come, such as the wastewater treatment facility upgrade and the reconstruction phases of our roads. But with the record going population comes the needs of a lot more community members. And I hope to find a way to help fortify and grow our local business community and to grow our community activities such as our parks and facilities available at them. That is my goal. Those are the projects that I look forward to being a part of in the next four years, if I am given the privilege. I just see that our population growth is going to nearly double probably in the next few years. And we don't have the infrastructure with our local businesses and in our parks or any facilities for that matter, besides maybe our schools, that there are people that are going to be looking for things to do. And kids are going to look for things to do, and we want to keep them engaged. We want to involve them in the community, and how can we do that? And those are projects that I would like to work with the city staff and look forward to hopefully forming to help increase the community participation in the city as well. I do know from past experience that there is not a ton of participation or volunteerism that comes. There is a lot that continues, like there is about, a handful of people that continuously volunteer. But I love to engage our youth, engage more of our young parents that are in the community, and how we can consistently be involved in the community.
Thank you, Brandy, and Kelly.
Yes, I'm glad Brandy touched on community growth. It's my understanding that between the 2010 and 2020 census, Pine Island grew around 20%. As the community grows, of course, we need to encompass all the demographics, the issue survey, as well, Jason mentioned, the Prairie Island Indian Community and ICE tribal land, or will have tribal areas in city limits that we will need to accept with open arms as well. Of course, we, as city council members, are taxed with meaningful stewards of tax dollars. And the best way for us to determine what projects we prioritize is to get to listen to the constituents, like Brandy mentioned, getting folks involved. For example, by having more listening sessions and working toward making city more open, accessible, and friendly, we can hear from citizens what projects they are most looking forward to. One great example that the city of Pine Island has recently done is with the park board determining their budget in the coming years. Their multiple face project involving that ice rink that, as you've seen, is the pickleball courts in the warmer months. It's because of the community feedback that referred a long project like that that the park board investigates people to pursue that specific project. Again, by holding more listening sessions and having more intentional outreach engagement with citizens, we can help entirely together as a community to learn where we're at.
Thank you, Kelly, and Jason.
Well, what projects we need is, we have to finish the streets. And it's not glamorous, it's not cool. But we have to get those done, the critical infrastructure under the streets are decaying away. We've got to get that done. We have to do a regional treatment plant, because our treatment plant is running all set max and pass. We have to get that done. We have to get all this done to be good stewards of pastors running, like Kelly said. It's also important to, to also, like the pickleball courts are, they're big. As Kelly touched on, have that kind of stuff in town too. But my priorities would be the streets, the regional plant, and downtown area. We need to keep downtown. We can't forget about the downtown area. And we've given them grants through the American Rescue Act. We've given them grants on that. We have loans, about 50% forgivable, or asset loans through the EDA. So we can't forget about the downtown when we're talking about all the discounts too, because that's very right with us. Those would be my priorities, along with parks, which is like a safety area. Have something fun to do in that just streets, so thanks.
Thank you. And for our next question, this will go to Kelly, then Jason, then Brandy. City council is a collaborative government body. If you're elected, what would you do to build relationships with fellow council members to effectively represent Pine Island residents?
Thank you. In the end of July, I attended a long conference focused on organizing and building people power. And my biggest takeaway from that conference was the difference between public versus private relationships. Most of the relationships in our lives are public relationships. We each individually have self-interests, and we find where those self-interests align to work toward a shared common goal. By establishing these relationships, we can work together on a specific project, even if we both aren't at the same starting point. I have had a fantastic working relationship with our current mayor, David Tries, Fred Testman. Anytime of day and night, he can help clarify certain items on the agenda or information in the packet that's trying to enter Sam. As well as the chamber director for six years, I worked with businesses and organizations in the community, as well as with vendors setting up at what was then the chamber sponsoring Farmers Market. And in my past community involvement pre-city council, as I mentioned, I volunteered on the Cheese Festival Committee with another city council member, Mike Kell, the brand. And having these working relationships, again, where we rely on our self-interests to work toward the same common goal, makes sure that we're working strategically and effectively together. Because I want to focus on having these robust, healthy public relationships, it's important to note that not all the relationships in our lives may be private relationships, but having public relationships can help strengthen us and we know that ultimately, we're stronger together, united around the shared values.
Thank you, Kelly, Jason.
I made a career out of working with other people listening. And that's what I do up here, is I listen to everybody. Not, no one person will ever be able to do everything they want without the support of the fellow council members. So you have to be able to listen. Sometimes there's a little give and take in things. I've had a great relationship up here with everybody I've served with. And you can just look around town and see that of the stuff we've accomplished here. So I would say listening, a little give and take, because it goes a long way. Level-headedness and a little support.
Thank you, Jason, and Brandy.
Everyone has those things that they're passionate about. The best way to build relationships is to find those little things that people are passionate about and find ways to collaboratively work together to, for common goals, like Kelly had mentioned. To be able to form relationships within the city. I have forms men working with the park board, volunteering for the cheese festival, working with public works, working with city staff on different things and projects and helping with the farmers market. There are several relationships, and you find out everybody's little passion or niche in the city or how to go about a process. And having those relationships really does help the goals that you want to achieve. I feel that my relationship with the council members are major, are close to me. And all of the city staff is great, like they're amazing people. They're great to talk to. They're easy to pick their brains. If you're interested as a community member, and you just have questions about if you reviewed the council packet, like Kelly said, she can message David. Having relationships with them as friends before being a clear council is amazing. It just gives you the clarity that you need. And to build a stronger relationship with them, with being privy to city information and everything, is a goal that I've had in mind for years. So I look forward to being able to fortify those relationships further and hopefully work.
Thank you, Brandy. This next question will go to Jason first, Brandy, and then Kelly. Businesses are an important aspect of a city's economy and critical to the city's taxes. How will you support our current businesses and foster business growth?
Well, like I said earlier, we've had out of assholes, which are 50% forgivable. We've given two rounds of care funding to the downtown businesses. We're working with Fiddy County and Main Street, because it's kind of a hot operation. I feel the east side is dangerous, in my opinion. I'm surprised no reserve of cargo ripped off yet. So if we can get angle parking on both sides, I think that will help downtown. And then as far as expanding, we can partner with landlords that are working with Sal. We can help through TIF, tax, I never wanted to say it, so yeah, TIF. And give them a more affordable way to go up here or expand. So that's how I would foster that. And listen, you know, they have ideas. We helped out our local businesses during COVID by renting tents. And that was free of charge, and that helped. So we're always willing to step up to the plate and help out of this. It's important to keep downtown alive. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason, and Brandy.
So we can talk about the funding or the support that we'll give them financially, but ultimately, my goal is to reteach our community. The phrase I hear a lot about Pine Island that I absolutely hate is bedroom community. And it's something that I struggle with as a community member who has a lot of friends in business, who supports local businesses consistently, that we are, yes, 13 minutes away from the nearest Starbucks store. But in the same aspect, residents have complained about not having access to certain things here in Pine Island. And in order for us to show that we need to grow our business community and support them, we need to show our existing businesses the support that they need to stay up close. And so really, my goal and how I would support them is just to be educating our community members on what do you, what do you need to do? What's your fiscal responsibility within our community? And what do you want to achieve here in Pine Island? You need to show other businesses that we can physically support our local businesses that are already here. And if we can't, they're going to keep leaving. That's the issue that we keep having. And we can't just hop in our car because it's easier to go down to Walmart because we don't have anybody here that can service some of our things. I can guarantee you, we can find something in Pine Island that we can get, that we can get at Walmart. It's, so really, education is the, I just want to, we have a lot of small, small family homes. I have couples, small families, and I want to just reeducate them on their responsibility as a community member to help us grow and strengthen these important numbers.
And Kelly.
Yes, as I mentioned, serving, excuse me. We've got a lot out of these people. As I mentioned, serving as the director of the chamber for six years gave me incredible insight into what these businesses are struggling with on a daily basis. During COVID, as Jason mentioned, there were legacies, the city stepping to support our businesses. The chamber as well started putting together multiple newsletters that are available since we cut down on regular meetings, just to keep businesses informed on what supports are available to them. And ultimately, what it comes down to is we're super ready to buy communication and collaboration so that businesses feel like they are being heard and supported, our EDA having like open door policy and doing various projects like the PSAD loan programs. We, in the past, city council has supported businesses in a variety of ways, such as local business units. We know that post-pandemic, the world is ever-evolving around us and we need to be adapting to that changing environment so all of us can thrive. And again, that thriving downtown is so important. You see other downtowns in my communities where the businesses collaborate with one another, maybe they have sales on the same days of the week. And that collaboration, as you know, arrives in time, it's all checks, allows everyone to succeed. I am thankful that we have so many great local business options here. I, myself personally, sell stuffed animals online, and I buy my pillows from Dollar General to stuff my stuffed animals with. And I'm at our post office, local days of each drop me on quarters. I love living in a local downtown and having businesses that fit my needs.
Thank you, Kelly. This next question will go to Brandy first, followed by Kelly and Jason. The city budget is graded each year, input from city staff, the budget committee, city administration, and approved by the full city council. What is one thing you would change within the city budget?
Very loaded question. It took me a very long time to think of a suitable answer. And I honestly don't know if there is something that I would necessarily change in these next couple of years. We are in a great trajectory in where we're going and what we're looking at finishing and what we're doing. What I would do is kind of flip it around and say, what can I do to extend that budget? What knowledge can I bring? What research can I do? Where can we find grants? Where can we find partnerships? Things like that with working with our city budget to make those dollars go further. That is what I took from the question. And the further we can extend our budget, the better. Volunteering, donations, the grants, is a far greater that we can maybe make that change. Maybe there is a grant, a donation, or something that we can partner with in the city where something might cost less. And then we have a little bit of budget to work with for putting more into our car budget or putting more into some activity in the community, such as the pool. Everybody wants a slide, so I mean, it's a hot topic. I mean, maybe there's something that we can do there. My goal wouldn't be to necessarily change one thing about the budget, but would be to just extend what we can with the existing budget and keep growing it with what we have. And then going forward, as we finish our big projects, such as our roads, things like that, then expand on making the budget.
Thank you, Brandy. Kelly.
Yes, I mean, I don't know, I'm in a simultaneously, really exciting and really difficult, challenging time. We know that in the community, your various boards and commissions are the groups that decide how the budgets are spent and allocated in their specific areas. One of my city council assignments is the cemetery board, and they are meticulous in keeping track of their read lips and what equipment is in good shape, planning for trees around the cemetery. What it comes down to is those boards and commissions, being educated on what those budgets can do. I don't have a suggestion on, you know, what, something about the budget can be changed. But again, leaning into those listening sessions and having more engagement with the community will help the city better understand what the needs of the citizens are and what projects need to be prioritized and funded over others. I'm sure many of you have heard of RACE, the people's budget. And again, we, city council members, serve you so better understanding what the needs of our citizens are and shows that we have a budget that meets the needs that every citizen of Pine Island.
Thank you, Kelly, and Jason.
Well, I am on the budget committee, and I'll tell you, our city minister was a great job of separating the wants from the needs. And by the time I did it with David, I mean, we go line by line and scrutinize every major purchase. We don't just buy and talk to buy and talk. There's a reason for it. So we're working with SIVA through the EDA. And the person we have here, I don't see that does a great job finding grants. Don't tell him I said that. So, you know, and yes, our budget is getting bigger. So, you know, and yes, our budget is getting bigger every year. But a wise person once told me that it's like when your family expands, your grocery store is going to expand. You know, and the plus side of that is we're going to get businesses and houses in here. Taxes will eventually go down. So what would I change in the budget? I think we do a pretty thorough job right now. And anybody can look into it and ask questions. We built a city shop in the addition and we got the shell done, but we didn't pour the sun up because, you know, we're trying to do it slowly. So we take good care of the people's life. That's always first around my.
Perfect, thank you. We have reached the end of our pre-terminating questions and we will open it up to citizen questions. Again, there are pieces of paper and pens in the back. If you do have questions, please write them down and hand it to our staff personnel as a power question. The first one was submitted prior to tonight. This question will go to Kelly, then Jason, then Brandy. In the areas of natural disasters, public health, and civil defense, what are the current emergency protocols that are in place now? And what can we do to improve them, including improving communications to the citizens of Pine Island?
Let's take a moment to talk about the small town feel that we have here in Pine Island. As we know, the flood in Pine Island was devastating. But you saw neighbors and community members come together and standard each other's homes. Just this one instance of a natural disaster was horrible to happen to our community, but it was inspiring to see everyone come together. Since then, we have river monitors and other systems in place to monitor when that might be an issue. Our Public Works employees work around the clock to make sure, for example, when it comes time to fall snow, that that's done in an efficient and orderly manner of time. And again, any disasters come up, we can proactively try to address them with the monitoring systems we have in place. In the past year or so, there's also a sewage leak that happened now. That was an incredible learning experience for the City Council, understanding how we may have an issue like that. How do we communicate with citizens and how do we ensure that we understand the situation and that we're communicating with the citizens as that's happening? And that's not exactly a natural disaster, but an example of an unexpected, unpredictable situation that can come up that the city has to navigate and grapple with. I am still thankful for our competent staff at City Hall and our Public Works Department to help us navigate what can be some pretty surprising, horrible natural disasters.
Wait, Kelly, Jason?
Well, as far as learning, I know we're investing in a new website, which is going to have the capabilities to send out coordinates to our citizens. Something should come out, for example, what we had a month ago now, the incident over there in the southeast. I know the county can send out a code red, but sometimes that, for whatever reason, doesn't go up right. A lot more people were notified, they probably shut it off. But we have that. I know our Public Works has always prepared. I mean, they've got a ton of sandbags. They're always making those ready to go. And, excuse me. I, I worked here, I was in town in, I believe, 2010, major flood. And I remember going down a canoe on Lily Lane and notifying people. And there were so many people helping us. I was using somebody's canoe. They're all getting supplies for people. We have a great community in that, in that aspect. I think this new website is going to be a great thing because then we could, if something's going on, there's a water main break. We can let the group of houses that are affected know. I think that's a great thing. And we also have an emergency management director's spot right at the city. Assistant City Administrator is going to take that and run the city and work with the county ones. Tell me where's the management director.
Thank you, Jason and Brandy.
So feedbacking on Kelly and Jason first, there's a lot in place existing. I know that our new website that is coming is going to be pivotal in our communication with our community members. I, and I am also going to feedback on our community members. They're always willing to step in and help. And I feel that the processes that we have in place, I haven't been here as long as others to experience some of those big events, but it has flooded when I've been here. And I've seen front homes, the wonder, and have severe water issues and damage. And it's really amazing just how the community can pull together and the knowledge, the wealth of knowledge that everybody has when we come together. And with our existing processes we have in place, we're usually successful in helping everybody get what they need and where they need to be, et cetera. So I feel that with the extension of our communications with the website and like Jason had stated, the text messages to our community members, it will just fortify our emergency management process that we already have in place.
Thank you, Brandy. This next question will go to Jason, Brandy, and then Kelly. In today's social media world, do you believe that a council member can post in a public or private platform or page and be seen for individual views and/or opinions? Or are you always representing the city of Pine Island in anything you say or do?
I'm not a good social media person. I don't post. I don't say everything. But you know, everybody has a second argument. They have the right to say what they want. But you also have to also understand the role in the community too. So that's kind of a little bit of a tricky question. Slippery social media nowadays, everything goes viral. But, you know, everybody has, they have a right to their opinion. We know people's opinion from the president on the mound. They'll post how they feel about their opinions. That's fine, but I guess, I guess the follow-up of it, there's a follow-up. Again, I'm not part of that, so. Guess that's my success.
Thank you, Jason. Brandy?
Well, my aspect of social media is really different than Jason's. But I can say that being on social media is a personal responsibility as well as if you're an elected official, it is your responsibility to maintain your position no matter what place you post online, as anything can be public in any way, shape, or form, no matter what settings you have set. I believe that you can post your personal beliefs on your personal page, but you have to realize that and make it clear that it's your personal beliefs. And it should never be shared in any way, shape, or form, like any association with your job or elected seat or anything. I can say that personally, I try to be Switzerland. Being usual, trust me, I have very many opinions that I would love to post everywhere. But I also respect others and their right to be able to do so as well. So if people do so, I just, like, I expect them to act responsibly with them. Being able to respect others and their opinions and still post, it's kind of gone away in this world of social media. So you just have to be cognizant of the position you hold so that it doesn't negatively affect your constituents, your community members, or even your family, which in large part is something that is very easy to do when you are just posting online. So I believe that you should not, or very well think through what you're posting before you post it.
Thank you, Brandy. And Kelly.
Yes, one of the challenges with living in a small town is we all wear a little mask. For example, our mayor is also active on fire departments. I myself have been involved with the Chamber and other community organizations. So it is important to clarify what can occur where you're coming to a certain situation. At all times, even with our personal views, we are representing the city and we be cognizant of that. We council members have a code of conduct we can follow on some social media etiquette and reminders on how we can all be our best selves. There's personal ideologies that we all have that we bring into the work that we do, which are our passions and our drives and why we're so committed to this work. I think we all can agree that at the end of the day, we believe people should be treated respectfully. Members should be appreciated and we're adults and we can communicate with one another as adults. Our different opinions and different life perspectives just give them a holistic view to the council's actions as a whole. I personally have been very active on social media in my council capacity and in my personal capacity. One thing I've enjoyed doing on my City Council Facebook page is educating citizens when I attend different meetings and committees. I am one of the small cities representatives on the ROPHOR, the Rochester Old Street Council of Governments, which is basically a transportation planning organization. So in the Rochester area, when different interchangeings, transportation projects are looked at, there's not a lot of citizens that can participate in that process or even know what's going on. In my council capacity, I have shared information from ROPHOR with the public authorities and opportunities to provide inputs on different transportation projects that they are working on. We know that social media is a double-edged sword. We can use that tool to connect with our neighbors and to promote these projects and ideas.
Okay, Kelly. This next question is going to go to Brandy, Kelly, and then Jason. What is the label for Pine Island? For example, Rochester is known as medical town. How would you describe Pine Island or how would you want to market Pine Island to all citizens?
I don't think that would be a decision that one person alone could make. I think that's something that as a community and as a city would need to be a joint decision. I feel like there is a missing label. And I feel like there is, there can be the one that I mentioned previously, of kind of a bedroom community. Strike that from ever being said again in our community, right? That's what a goal of mine would be. But Rochester being a medical community, we're an outlier of a really big shadow. So what we need to do as a community is, what do we want to be? Let's find our label. I don't think that's been ever clearly defined and with our rapid growth, I feel that there is marketing opportunity there that we as a community need to come together and decide what we're going to do with it and how we're going to use it to strengthen our community.
Perfect, thank you, Brandy. And Kelly.
Yes, of course, when we think about labels, the first thought that came to my mind was cheese. In 1911, Pine Island had the world's largest cheese. In general, Pine Island has a rich history, whether it's with our cheese and dairy industry or with the indigenous people that first called Pine Island home. As you know, Waszulina is the Dakota Terre, the Isle of Climes, leading to the founding of Pine Island. We know that Pine Island was a popular winter in the grounds for the Dakota people. And with the Pine Island indigenous community soon coming to town, we want to acknowledge the history of our past and be proactive in planning for the future so that we can be open, friendly, welcome, and accepting to this new group of people that will be coming in. Pine Island has an incredible history in which many organizations in town have expanded that, educated citizens around it. The Pine Island Image Committee about ten years ago published these paths to the past booklets, which are walking tours around Pine Island that start from either point out historic buildings or historic homes and have a little description on what happened. If you're interested, the paths to the past do have road based booklets and the books have been digitized to then read them, scrolling through your phone. It's important, like Brandy said, that we dismiss the labels like that are created and focus on what our community currently has to offer. For those who know Chris Dietz or Mr. Pine Island, there's so much rich Pine Island history that you can celebrate, learn more about, and educate more folks about.
Thank you, Kelly. And Jason.
I'm trying to think what we could label. I agree with them, we shouldn't have labels. We'd be growing community with a small town feel, all of this put on a billboard or not. We have a lot to offer here, but we are a best of Rochester. It's a fact, you know. But we got to find a way to keep people here. And like Kelly said, we have a lot of neat things in Pine Island. The parks, the trails, we have a lot of stuff here. So it's hard to label it, you know, one thing, the cheese fest and everybody knows about that. You know, if you get along and walk around in town, you can see all sorts of neat stuff. The History Center, the building over here, the IOOF, International Lodge Fowles Building. Do you see that on the top? That has a history. You Google that, it's kind of weird. But there's stuff around here to do. I guess that's all I have left. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. If there are no further questions from the public.
I think so. I came here twenty-one years ago already. Doesn't seem like it, been very fast. But my life prior to coming here, my family was kind of moved around there because my father was military. And by the time I was fourteen, I ended up in Ford County, Texas. But at any rate, I used to travel from one place to another, this is down in Miami, and go through these little tiny towns. And they all have a little center town, church, funeral home, and a cemetery. And I always wanted to live in one. And then twenty-one years ago, I'm here. And it's been hometown to me. And I love it because it is exactly as it is a hometown. And one to be proud of. And I love the name of the inn, which I love, the legend of the inn. And it is sheltered all tornadoes, fountains, most of them. And it is a safe, beautiful place. And that's what I wanted to say.
Can I say one quick thing? If they want to be counted. I just want to thank Kelly and Brandy for running. There's two seats up and there's three of us. Not a lot of people want to do this. And I'd like to see more people step up to the playground stall. So, you know, Mayor Ray's got a little seat and two people. So it's, it's a lot of work to be up here, but it's nice people sacrifice. Just want to thank both of them for putting in also.
And so since there's no further questions at this time, what we're going to do is we're going to... Did you have a question? I can write it down, but she won't be able to read. I do have a question. The last question will go Kelly, Jason, and then Brandy.
Yeah, and this is short.
I'll have to pick a question.
Okay, here's a question. First part of this paper. The council is a governing body only when it's in session, when you have a call. However, you wear that hat every day. As opposed to the other committees and organizations you serve on, some are volunteers, some are appointed. But most of them are not elected by the populace of Pine Island. So of all the hats you're going to wear, that's the big... My question is this. What do you feel is the primary role of a council member and the City Council?
Repeating last question was, what do you feel is the primary role? And what's of a council, of a council member? What is the primary role of a council member?
I forgot what was first.
Kelly, Jason, and then Brandy.
Yes. I feel a council member's role is to hold as a council governing body together. It's to provide direction to the city and to forward thinking what direction the city will move in. But almost just as important, we see council members, our liaisons between the members of the public and the city. We get stopped in the grocery store, in the post office, folks asking various questions about what's happening. And we can help digest and metabolize the information down to make sure that citizens in the community understand what's happening on a city level by making sure that we're connecting with our friends and neighbors and education about what's going on. We're not necessarily smoothly meeting citizens and... We're not necessarily smoothly feeding citizens information, but we're making sure that everyone has access to the information they deserve to know because their tax dollars are going to the city that they live in. It's been my pleasure the past four years in my term of city council, connecting with neighbors and answering these questions about what the city has going on. I am grateful for my fellow city council members that I can always reach out to with questions. We get direction from City Hall when there's maybe a contentious issue. This is the statement, or this is how you should reply. And ultimately, we're here to serve. We want to make sure that we're meeting the citizens where they're at and that they have the information they need to be critically engaged.
Thank you, Kelly. Jason?
Well, we're here to serve the people, the city of Pineland. They've given us the authority to govern here, to spend their hard earned money, and we have to keep that in mind first and foremost. Like Kelly said, we're around, we answer questions. I answer them all the time on tax statements and what's going on around town. But we're here to serve the people of Pineland. And that's what I've done in the past and I'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Jason. And Randy.
Well, given the privilege, we're elected to represent our community. We're the people that they like to look for guidance. We're the people that they've entrusted and voted in to handle their money, like Jason said and Kelly said. We're here to be that approachable person that people can come to with questions, with the next steps in the process, with the ability to encourage and like the passion in people as well. Like, we, yes, manage our tax dollars, but the, we are elected for a reason. They're the reason that people see us as leaders. And when you're elected, you are given the ability to cover our tax dollars and see how they see that invested our community. And if you cannot what do I want to say? Show that you are approachable to our community members and encourage them and show empathy and knowledge and encourage them to be involved as well, all in one. It's not just about managing tax dollars. It's really, they want us to leadership. They want to see faith in people. And I feel that that is what you do as a council member. You are the person that's been able to provide guidance and leadership in trying to accomplish what the community needs. So.
Thank you. Then at this time, we're going to open it up for three minutes for each candidate to discuss any topic that they did not get a chance to cover and any closing remarks that you have. First, we will start with Jason, then Randy, and then Kelly.
First, I'd like to thank you guys for showing up, the people online that are going to watch us later. I think we've covered a lot of ground tonight. Of course, topics we haven't covered, right? Right now, I can't, but I probably won't. But I do thank you for watching us. I appreciate your vote. I'll continue to serve, continue to be approachable, and leave Pineland proud. That's my catchphrase. I just thought.
Thank you, Jason. And Randy.
There's not a lot that we haven't covered. Again, probably like Jason, I'll think of it in hindsight. But I do appreciate the relationships I've made in my campaign having run in 2020. And now my relationships have expanded exponentially. And being able to serve the Pineland community in any way, it has been a privilege. And I will continue to do so. I just hope that I am still enough faith in myself from before you that you would welcome me and remember me. I will continue to show you the strength that I can bring to the role and my passion for making something better.
Thank you, Randy. And Kelly.
Yes, a couple issues I haven't had the opportunity to break out yet tonight are, again, focused on the transparency and accessibility of the city. Because we appear to serve and connect citizens with what's happening on a city level, we want to make sure that City Hall has an open door policy and is accessible to transfer it. This would include live streaming, our local city council meetings, and if the need were to arise, virtual attendance that council members could virtually attend meetings with stipulations in place not to abuse the virtual access policy. Again, by connecting citizens with information about what's happening in the city, we can make sure that everyone has a seat at the table and all voices are being represented. It's clear that I have been passionate about Pineland since my days in high school, almost a decade ago, and I voted in every election since I first turned 18. I was very active in high school, and the school district has supported so many students in this community. Yearbook, speech team, I've seen CLA, DAPA. And after I graduated high school, I was pretty bummed that I didn't have those spots anymore. And that's what set me down the trajectory of the community organizations that I have participated in. In the end of 2016, when I was diagnosed with a cancerous brain tumor, the community came out in droves to my medical benefit. And it was so awe-inspiring and humbling to think that I made an impact on that many people in the community. And I thank you all for bearing with me as I figured out how to balance and adjust to this new normal. I'm constantly adjusting to. But at the end of the day, it's clear that all of our candidates, all of our council members and all of our city staff have a clear, strong passion for Pineland. If that passion weren't there, we would not be doing what we're doing. I have had a fantastic time serving on city council for the past four years. And to continue this work of building a welcoming community that we all want to live in, I would love your vote to reelect me as self-city council.
Thank you, Kelly. Then at this time, this has concluded our city council candidate forum for 2022. We will take a short recess, and then at 7:15, the mayor forum will begin.